There we go. Good. Excellent. Okay, let's start with the pleasure of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. It is Tuesday, August 26, 2025. This is the monthly planning board meeting. Two minutes after 5:00 PM. And this meeting is called to order. Let me start by saying, this is, to my left is Larry Perrin. He is, you have been a planning board member for, I don't know how long, a decade and a half.
I think it's, this is the 16th year.
And 16 years, if you think about it, it's a very long time. And tonight is his last meeting because he is moving in retirement with his wife out of town. So I don't know how to properly sort of salute you, but you've been a joy to work with and your calm comments and insight has been invaluable. And thank you very much. It's been good having you here.
Thank you, John. And I want to just take a moment to thank all the people that I've worked with all these years, including five planning board chairs, Neil Slevin, Greg Ferraris, Neil Slevin again, Kay Lawson, and John Shaka, and for all of the staff that have supported our work, Doris Carey, who's not here, of course, Liz, and Rich is back again, but Kathy Eisman and John Ellsworth as well, and all the board members that I've spent the time with. It's been a pleasure living in Sag Harbor for 31 years and for sharing this experience for the last 16. And I'll miss the village very badly from September until May. Not so much in the summer, but it's been a most beautiful place to live. So, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Fantastic. Good way to start the evening. Minutes, we need to approve the, a motion to approve the minutes. If you've all looked, seen them. This is from the June meeting, June 24. I think the July meeting was canceled because of lack of business. So this is the June meeting, the minutes. I'll take a motion to approve them. Thank you, Brian. Second, thank you, Susan, all those in favor approving the minutes.
Aye.
Aye. Good. That's unanimous. Okay, on to the work section, which is part two. Number one is 23 Main Street. Site plan application, special exception used for outdoor dining of Big Fish Holding LLC. That's otherwise known as SED restaurant. So this is in front of the zoning board and the zoning board asked for comments from us. And so we need to provide some commentary to the zoning board so they can make a decision about what before them. So is there someone here to present? From? I'll need you to introduce yourself, please, at the podium. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jesse. I'm Jesse's wife. I work also at SED. And
Sorry, there's a little bit of feedback. I'm having trouble hearing the speaker.
Yeah, I hear it too. Yes, finish it with that. Is there? I don't know what to do.
That's better.
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay.
Yeah? Okay. I'm sorry, I apologize for that. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I wasn't aware that we were on the agenda for today. Unfortunately, Jesse and I, who operate and run SED, were not here in the last meeting when we spoke to the planning board. So his brother attended.
Right.
That was the ZVA.
And he did, yes. And then he passed the notes along to us saying that, you know, you were going to refer to the, I think that we're going to speak to the building department first to get some details in clarity about what we were requesting. So at that point, I had reached out to Bruce and asked if he had any feedback for us so we could report what steps we needed to take in order to continue our application. And he said he was going to check with Kerry. And then he gave her back, it's unfortunate, it's our busy season and I forgot to follow through with it. So I'm unsure about exactly.
So this is a mandatory referral from the zoning board appeals. There's a code section which requires them to hear from this board for planning input before the ZVA can leave any parking spaces under the code. But you may want to review the hearing that started before the ZVA and see some of the testimony that occurred so far and then decide if you want to retain counsel or a land use specialist or someone to help you with your application. Tonight, they're supposed to give feedbacks so that we can draft a memorandum from this board to go back to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, I see. Well, as you all know, in 2020, with the open pandemic that we all experienced, we were allowed, all restaurants in town were allowed to start their outdoor dining from 21, I believe, because there was no indoor dining at 2020. So I believe that April of 2021, we allowed the restaurants in town to utilize their outdoor areas for dining. And at that point, we were allowed to use our back parking lot for outdoor dining. On 2022, I believe it was reviewed again that we will need to, or restaurants in town will need to reapply for outdoor dining permits that we did before the pandemic. So, but there was no really restrictions at that point about what to do. You just needed to apply. And I think it was not even happy. And we did. And then on 2023, they were reviewing whether or not these outdoor dining allowance will continue since indoor dining was open back up. And they said they were going to do this soon. So I believe May of this year, we receive a letter saying that now we would have to reapply fully for to utilize the rear space, which is our back parking spaces in the building at 23 Main Street for usage of outdoor dining. And we were still allowed to apply for our existing porch, which is five tables in the front, normally pre-pandemic. So at that point, you know, we started asking about the process and I believe it was said that we could keep it while we were applying.
Right.
So continuing to that, we applied to the board and they have said, I think it was planning board first, who refers to the zoning board. And there's obviously concerns about the parking.
Yeah.
And we do have five spaces in the back. And our application was to grant us to have a temporary outdoor dining seasonally every summer, just like we do the front, the porch area. So we wanted to get a variance to convert the usage temporarily from parking to outdoor dining in the back as well as the front.
Right.
And what we wanted to communicate and we wanted to stress always usually is we house more than 90% of our employees. So they are within walking distance to SED. They don't live in our buildings, 23 Main Street. We have houses at 21, 21, 21 Main Street and 117 Main Street, which we use for staffing and they will come walk to work. So that's where we were, we were trying to leverage saying we really don't want those five spaces since we have most of our staff walk to work. And I know Jesse has been a very big advocate to the parking for employees and trying to do the shuttle and trying to utilize the green areas for that. To try and help the people.
Right. Good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Can you bring?
So I have one question. So these are additional seats in addition to the outdoor dining seats in the front, right? How many additional seats are you seeking to put where the five parking spaces are in that?
Twenty.
I'm sorry, are these, in the application, I read the tables we brought from the inside to the outside.
Yes, we do that with the front porch area. We bring those outside and we could do the same. But we were, we were advised that we could maybe possibly apply for 20 additional seats.
Okay.
So we are at 97.
Right now, your CO is 97.
Our CO is 97. And then we were saying, if possible, that was part of something that could be done. I don't know who mentioned that to us. We wanted to ask for an additional 20 in the back. But if not, we are happy with just being able to move the seats from the inside outside. One thing that we did notice that I think is important to mention is that we have run data on pre-pandemic pandemic and post-pandemic numbers. And we, before, in 2019, we were doing the exact same covers, amount of people, guests dining in our restaurant. We were doing the same number of covers that we did in 2024. So it's not, because I believe one of the concerns that were brought up to Tori and Jesse's brother was that we were going to bring more people to the village. And so we did an analysis about it and we found that we had the same, if not just a few more people in 2024 than we did in 2019. What we believe is that we're just accommodating people faster because there's more seats available between 7 and 9 that everybody wants to dine.
I see.
So it's not really bringing a lot more, it's just allowing people to dine here.
It's the same, I mean, it's the same number of covers. I mean, you're not, it's relocation, you're not.
Exactly.
So it makes sense that it's the same number.
Exactly.
Can you, I know this also, and I'm a little confused about another, let me talk more about that in a second. But there's an outdoor refrigerator or freezer that's part of this discussion?
Yes.
I think it's part of this discussion.
So they just received, so they just received zoning board appeals approval to allow an outdoor refrigerator to stay in that back area. However, they had to show, there was no waiver of parking associated with that decision. They had to show on the plan that they could still accommodate five parking spaces. Because obviously, this is a 97-seat restaurant with two apartments in the building, a three apartment in the building, I'm sorry. So the parking retirements are pretty significant and they only have five,
Right.
Five physical spaces on site. This, you know, so that the prior system, ZVA felt very strongly that, yeah, we'll give you the fridge because you needed for your business and you established that. But they did not want to waive the parking at that point in time. They wanted that to be considered as a planning consideration and also as a separate variance consideration.
Okay, my question is, is it possible, is it, is it even possible to have the fridge there and still have the five parking spaces?
According to the plan they submitted, yes.
Okay, the plan I'm looking at shows three parking spaces with the tables included as well.
There's two others that are underneath the grouping of three.
Okay.
I look at the parking layout, it's quite a difficult parking layout. There's five cars in there, probably most of them are coming out. Well, there's no aisle typically happens on parking, parking layout. Before, the original plan had five spaces along one side. Now, we're the normal aisle places back out.
Right.
Now you have three on one side, two on the other.
Okay.
I mean, it could be looked at, you know, three or four sites maybe too, right? That would be something we would have to say.
Well, um.
Sorry, just wanted to comment on that.
Of course.
We were informed that some private parking lot belonged to us, that we didn't need to have the requirements to be able to turn a car, you know, we need that, we need the path, you know, that's just the car. But that's what we were informing that we didn't have like.
I don't know about that.
You have to buy the code. Your commercial says you have to buy the commercial standards for parking and.
I want to hear from anyone here, but I also want to hear from Rich Warren, who's, I think if you want to jump in at any point, feel free to.
There's also a memo that was submitted to you by Nelson.
That's right, and we can get.
This team is, like before, Rich actually had a chance to.
Okay, okay, got it.
Started. So they wrote this memo to you as well. Certainly you can hear from Rich as well.
And we can walk through, while it's my stuff, I'm walking through the memo for a moment if you want. There's a memo that, it was written only a few days ago, but I think we only received it. In fact, I think you folks only received it tonight, perhaps. This is the history of so the different actions that this, I guess this board, the zoning board has taken. CFO in 1976, 1985, a letter from the ZVA granting some parking variances. I'm skipping down to something to get closer in time to where we are. 1985 ZVA decision then for off-street parking variance. 2008 certificate of occupancy for pre-existing, the building, the three-story building, one restaurant and three bed apartments on the second and third floors. In 2012, there was a big, big expansion, right, or 2012 to 2015. Added, added to the same number of apartments, but increase in size. No increase in the number of bedrooms and number of seats. Thus, no additional parking required. 2015, the six parking stalls, one seemed to be on the neighboring property, so it was adjusted. And so there was a decision then to adjust it and that brought the number of parking down to five. So I guess that's where we end, how we end up with five.
It started at 18.
Started at, okay, thank you for that. You're right, 18 spaces are required, yeah.
So the code, 18 spaces required. So the code has special exception standards for outdoor dining. And they require that the total number of seats indoor and outdoor shall not exceed the approved maximum number of seats per the CO. So additional seats probably would not be permitted, which would also, obviously, if you put additional seats here, you would trigger additional parking requirements. It's one space, one parking space for every four seats. Most of the restaurants in the village, as you know, did get a benefit, I mean, 2014. In 2014, they changed the code to go from like one to three, I think, to one to four. So every restaurant got the benefit of that relaxed code allowing for additional seating without requiring the additional parking spaces.
And SED got that as well?
Yes, every restaurant benefited from that. So, I mean, so that's the first section is 31117. You would have to just take the seats from inside and move them out. You wouldn't be able to have additional seats pursuant to that section. You do have the right to ask for a variance from that code section, but you did not in your current application. So you have to amend your application. So they have 97 seats. They're going to, you know, basically, the ZVA is being asked to eliminate all parking on-site associated with a 97-seat restaurant. It's one per four, so it's like 25 parking spaces, going to zero.
And that's without regard to the apartments?
That's without regard to the apartments, which there are three, which is 1.5 spaces per apartment, unless they're two-bedroom apartments. I don't know how many bedrooms, then it's two spaces. They're one bedroom. Okay, so it's 1.5 spaces per apartment. And of course, even if they're putting their employees somewhere else, these, just the ZVA decision at least would run with the land, not the owner. So even though this is a great owner who's doing great things for their employees and finding a home for them close by so they don't have any parking spaces, that doesn't mean that the next owner will be able to do the same thing. So these are planning considerations you have to think about when you're making your recommendation to the ZVA. The ZVA has its own standards to apply as you know. But for this, for the village, obviously, it's a precedent-setting decision of the ZVA move forward for them. You have to also consider village code 314.3 P1B, which is to consider the public health, safety, and welfare of the public residents with the objective of ensuring adequate off-street parking is provided to satisfy the parking needs as a proposed uses on-site and the interior circulation system is adequate to provide convenient access to such spaces consistent with pedestrian safety. And so there's those factors. So it's basically the special exception standards and then there's site plan standards that you should be thinking about when you're thinking about making a memo to the ZVA of what we can say.
I just have a question, just, so none of your employees have cars?
They do.
So then where do they park?
And they're, where they live, like the one, you know, at least. We, we're very seasonal, so we bring Miami workers that live in our country, Main Street, up on Main Street. And we also have other employees that are here year-round that live at 21 Main Street. That's how we say where we keep most of our year-round employees, so, but sometimes.
Right.
And who lives upstairs?
We have sushi chefs. We have J1 students that come just so they don't have cars.
The park, like, is there any parking during the day? Do you take the chairs and the seats away and tables? Is that accessible during the day for deliveries, for service, for?
Currently, no, but it's based, just because of the pandemic happened. And then this year, where this, when we were informed that this couldn't happen anymore. But need to be, what we are asking for is just have the outdoor dining seasonally. And then we will have our parking the nine months of the year. Like we would obviously open it up, the whole thing, and have it back the way it was.
How do deliveries, you mentioned deliveries, how do they happen now?
Division Street. And then there is an opening in the back of our building, which is like parking lot in exit two. And they just, they'll bring it down into the back and all our fishing products goes right into the walking box that we installed. So they leave it there. And when the employees come in in the afternoon, it has not been sitting out in the sun for a long time, period of time, so they literally put it inside themselves.
Got it, okay. But the trucks are on the street or?
On Division Street.
Okay.
They deliver to all their merchants.
Look, I'm sympathetic, I'm sympathetic to the needs of a business, but at the same time, I'm sympathetic to the needs of the village and for parking. Park, the summertime is when we need parking. And that's exactly when it will be going away. And I'm also hearing our attorney saying it would be precedent-setting to eliminate parking for a restaurant. You know, so that would happen if we, it would happen in other places, I'm sure. Or be asked to happen in other places. I'm hesitant to remove parking from, remove parking availability that should be available to the public and/or people who are living here. You know?
Yeah, I mean, by the letter of the code, you should need close to 30 spaces. What, 25 plus four and a half or something? The site originally had 18. Then it went down to six. Now it's at five. I, I mean, I see no basis and parking is probably the largest planning issue the village faces. So I don't see how we can grant that relief, especially since you said you did essentially the same amount of business with indoors as you did with outdoors.
You wouldn't be granting a relief, you'd be recommending to the ZVA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
These are not public parking spaces. So it's not about public parking. It's really only technically about employee parking or resident parking for people.
Or restaurant patrons, if you have to have 25 spaces per.
We're talking about the five that exist right now.
Right.
Those are not for restaurant patrons.
Should they not be?
They're not restricted, so they could be.
They could be, technically.
Yeah, they could absolutely be. They're off-street parking.
I have a question for you, Jess. Given that whether the seats are inside or outside, it's the same number of seats. And basically the same, let's say, roughly the same amount of business. What advantage is there to the business to having the seats outside during the season?
I would just say, yes, preference, that's, we don't have, you know, people who come and want to sit outside or inside. I would, I would think that's mainly the people thing. Because we only have the small tables on the back.
Do you think it's a holdover the paranoia of the pandemic? Or do you think it's evolved into just a preference for outdoor dining?
I think it's the preference, since people are on vacation. I think they consider being outside, enjoying big nice weather in the summertime.
So it is, to a certain degree, advantageous to the business because of customer preference?
To clarify, we're talking about simply in the parking, outdoor dining in the back. We have, we don't deal with the sidewalk parking at all. That will continue as it's, right.
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking for a recommendation to the zoning board from the planning board, I think SED does a phenomenal job with its staff housing and its ability to, I'm sure, nobody does have a car that you're housing on-site. But it's all these little variances and these, oh, we'll let you guys do it. That has kind of produced this parking problem in the village. And I've seen it with businesses my entire life. And it's just one of those things where you guys take away your five parking spaces, SAG Pizza takes away their parking spaces. You know, I don't even know, the new one on the corner that had all the little Ferraris out last year, they take away their parking spots. And suddenly, that's, that's 25 less spots in the village. And everyone is arguing about, you know, how do we find five spaces in the village right now? And to me, you know, Tori and Jesse have to understand that. If, if we make the recommendation that it just, the village can't just have this floodgate open to continue to take away parking, when it's such an issue in the village. That would be my two cents on it.
You know, you mentioned that your husband's Jesse, right? And I've seen him speak at the American Hotel. He really is an advocate for, for all sorts of public policy issues and one is parking. I've seen him speak about that. And he did come up with the idea of like trying to get the hopper move around. I'm not sure where that stands now, but I give him really high regards for thinking that way and thinking, thinking about solving the problem. But I don't think this will help solve the problem. I think it will exacerbate the problem. This, the idea of like removing those parking spaces in addition to making a headache for the village going forward because we've now set a precedent for other, other businesses and other restaurants. Rich, do you have any comments you want to make?
I would agree with everything you said. I've had a chance to look at this over the past couple of days because we're like, we're in a seat here. But my biggest concern is the fact that there are three apartments. That now there'll be no parking for three apartments. And if they are, they would be occupied by people other than employees, which there's no restriction for that. Now they will be putting pressure on public parking that's like probably right behind on the other side of Division Street. But there's that parking lot. So it's a little bit like death by a thousand cuts, as you mentioned. So you start taking away here and taking away there, you'll start winding up with a parking problem. More parking problem than you already had.
It happens, yeah.
And one of the things that was in my head is the problem the village needs to, if the village is going to consider these kinds of things, they probably need to have a parking strategy. Something that's larger than just saying, we're going to grant relief here, we're going to grant relief here. Because here you have a 97-seat restaurant, which I think most of the patrons find places in the public to park. And they walk down and they buy a t-shirt or a book or whatever. And then they have dinner and they walk around and they enjoy it. But the parking in the back, to me, is probably more, my biggest concern is that the apartment use. They've ably handled their employees by having two homes where they can now bring them places here at the locations. Because I just answered one of my questions. But if you have people that are actually living here, where do they park? And if they can't park here on-site during the summer, when it's the high, high season time, they're going to be parking public spaces, taking away from, from the spaces available for the other people. So I think it's a bigger picture that the village really should be looking at. I know the trustees have authorized, we're inclined to do a traffic study. I think they're talking about that. And I'm actually just thinking about talking to Elizabeth and the trustees. And maybe they should also do a parking analysis. We did one back with the conference at 11, just a very, very quick parking analysis. And I think we came up with like 1,380 parking spaces, which a large majority of those were on private property. It was more, more than half on private property, some public property. At that time, I don't know what it is today.
Right. Right.
But I think it's probably something that should be revisited and I I, as you mentioned, SAG Pizza, there's also the alley next to the American Hotel. Now, where what could happen with the loss of of private parking? So I do think that this has potentially impressed themselves.
Right.
My suggestion to the village should hesitate on some points.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? Liz, you're you're what you need, what the zoning board needs from us?
Just a memo. So if you have a consensus where you're going to recommend, based on your discussions, to, you know, just with regard to the planning considerations, I can put them in writing and send it to the board.
Okay.
Can can we add the proviso that virtually every matter that comes before us involves consideration of parking? And that if there's a way to address it globally, rather so that we're not dealing with it case by case?
Well, I mean, that would.
But or in response to a policy, that would be great.
See that, but the ZBA doesn't have as big as you. They don't have these authority.
It's trustees.
Okay, yeah. That's the.
And this is just a memo back to the ZBA. How do we say that to the trustees?
We I guess.
You need to talk to your liaison.
I and I can do that.
Yeah.
I can do that. Yeah, our liaison is Deputy Mayor Ed Heck. So I'm I'm happy to talk to him about that. Okay, so Liz, do you need us to take a vote on 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 asking you to to write a memo or?
That would be the next step. Is that what you'd like to us to agree with? Because then if you if they you can ask for them to adjourn to write the memo if you want to do that. But then the ZBA won't have the memo for the next meeting. And they can't act without the memo pursuant to the code, but it's 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 really something if you prefer, they could adjourn this. And to and then you could get representation or get further evidence to submit to the board. I don't know what you want to do.
Well, I would I would really like something in writing, just so I can have, you know, something just stated to show and speak to and chat again tomorrow about it.
Yeah.
This time.
Their memo would be in writing. I would put it in writing. Yep, they would direct me to put it in writing and then and then I would send it to them, make sure it's okay. Then she would issue it to you within this week.
Exactly. And then at that point, we can discuss and then come back with any whether we need to.
You wouldn't come back to this board, but you would go to the ZBA. Okay, understood. Yes, but the ZBA would be in receipt of that memo.
Right.
Okay.
Liz, a question about the decision making process. If we as a board recommend essentially against this proposal. We're only acting in an advisory capacity. The ZBA is going to make their own decision based on the weight of their information. This is just a piece.
Yes, this is just a piece of that information. It's your job is to give them the planning considerations. Because their job is obviously to apply the five part test under New York State Village Law. So, you know, they'll be looking at the impacts of community character and applying the five part test. Is the is the variance request substantial and everything they have to go through? But they'll also consider your referral and their decision making.
Okay, thank you.
Will will you be able to write a memo based on what we spoke about tonight and then maybe pass it by me?
What are you recommending? Are you recommending against them? You said against, you were very vocal against against, but and and you were.
I I think I think I think what I'm hearing.
Granting the variances or based on what your planning considerations are.
Hesitant to grant variances for for public for reasons of of public policy that we stated, which is like lack of lack of appropriate parking, precedent setting.
I'll just write it in.
The apartments are above, that goes with all with the property, not with the owner. Things like all those things.
We understand it's 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 not. It's not for us. It's setting out precedent for everyone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
SED is our favorite restaurant.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I know.
No, and you you folks are, yeah, it's not personal at all. It's it's and we're thinking about the entire village. Okay, is does that does that work for you, Liz?
If I'm ready, I'll make sure it gets sent. Sure.
Good. Thank you very much. And that's something that I can you can write up and I can take care of in the next week or whatever.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be signed, but you need to just make a motion to direct me to write it right now.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of that motion to write the memo? Thank you. Thank you, Emily. That's unanimous. Good. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to item number two, which is eleven Bridge Street. This is.
Time for me to go.
Right, I forgot that. She recuses herself on this particular application. So.
Well, you can want to know what's in here.
That that is two.
That's too many.
War and peace.
That's another, you can take that with you. That's.
Must I?
You must take that with you.
Thank you.
Consider it a birthday gift. Thanks. So what we're what today really is, we have we have, it's a procedure and where it's a status update more than anything else in procedure. And we have Nelson Pope of Orheez's John Ellsworth here to continue handling that particular application for us, and we're happy to have him here. I don't see him on the panel, but I think you're here, John, somewhere.
I am.
I see you now. I see you now.
Okay. Should I just jump right into it?
Move right to you, please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm just, as the chairman said, I'm here to give an update on the eleven Bridge Street application. I thought it would be helpful to start with a timeline of key milestones to briefly recap where we are with the project and how we got here. So there's a series of milestones that happened leading up to tonight. The original application was submitted in February of twenty twenty four. Planning Board established itself as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACR, and issued what's known as a positive declaration in April of twenty twenty four, and that required the applicant to prepare a draft environmental impact statement. Planning Board conducted public scoping to obtain input on the outline for the DEIS. And the final scope was issued in June twenty twenty four. The applicant prepared the DEIS, which underwent several rounds of what's known as completeness review. And that involved comments from the planning board and revisions by the applicant to address the comments. In March of this year, the planning board accepted the DEIS as complete for the purpose of commencing public review. Board held a public hearing on the DEIS at its April and May meetings. And the record was held open for about a month after that to receive written comments. After the close of the DEIS review period in June, the comments that were received, including the transcripts of the two hearings and all of the written correspondence, were forwarded to the applicant to prepare a preliminary or proposed final environmental impact statement, FEIS. About two weeks ago, the applicant made an FEIS submission for the board's consideration, and that's what we're here to discuss today. It's going to take some additional time to complete the review of the FEIS, and there's a few reasons for that. First, it's a big big document. As you may recall, the DEIS, the draft, was pretty big. This is about the same size and it has wide ranging and highly technical content. And secondly, and perhaps more importantly, as opposed to the DEIS, which was the applicant's document, that was subject to, again, completeness review by the planning board, the board as the SEACR lead agency is responsible for the content of the FEIS. That wasn't the case with the DEIS. The DEIS again was the applicant's document. FEIS, once it's complete, will have to speak with the board's voice about the proposed project. The DEIS was accepted by the slight difference, but important difference in the terminology. The DEIS was accepted by the board for the purpose of commencing public review. The FEIS will be adopted by the board as its own document. So we've started our review of the submitted FEIF, FEIS. We think we can finish our review and submit a draft memo with comments for the board's consideration at its next meeting in September, September twenty third, I think it is. Similar to what we did for the DEIS, these comments will be finalized based on any input received from the board and then will be transmitted to the applicant. That's the the typical path forward for these sorts of things. In the meantime, however, we've identified certain aspects of the FEIS as submitted, which indicate that it's not ready for adoption by the board. And we we believe it may be worthwhile to discuss at this time some of the key issues that we have already identified and which must be addressed before the FEIS can be completed. I know that Kim Gennaro is listening in. She's the environmental consultant for the applicant. So basically, we're communicating these preliminary findings, if you will, directly to the applicant tonight. Before getting into the discussion of the issues about the adequacy of the FEIS, and please, if you have any questions as we're going along, feel free to jump in. It should be pointed out that the proposed project has been modified in the FEIS. The main changes include the residential unit mix has been revised, the number of units remains at forty eight, and the mix of workforce housing and market rate housing remains the same. But the DIS plan, which included four studios, the FEIS plan now has no studios. And the mix of one and bedroom, two bedroom units has been shifted, so the number of one bedroom units has been reduced. And the number of two bedroom units has been increased. The proposed commercial floor area has been decreased by about a hundred square feet. The DEIS proposal for the construction of the ADA parking stalls and associated concrete pavement in the existing gravel parking lot at Five Bridge Street has been withdrawn. And these handicapped spaces have been relocated to the new building's grade level parking garage. The specified number of parking spaces associated with the proposed action remains at a hundred thirty seven under the FEIS plan, which is how many they were proposing in the DEIS plan. And currently includes forty two onsite parking spaces, which is reduced from forty four under the DEIS plan because they need additional room for the ADA spaces. And it's been increased to ninety five offsite spaces at Five Bridge Street. And again, it's because they no longer are providing the ADA spaces there, and it was two fewer spaces in the DEIS plan. Based on the change in the unit mix, the bigger units have a higher parking requirement. The parking required under the zoning code has been increased to a hundred thirty seven spaces. That's how many spaces they're saying they're providing under the proposed plan. And that compares with the hundred thirty three parking spaces in the DEIS proposal. The last thing, and and again, there are other little tweaks to the plan, but the last major thing, if you will, is that the ground floor residential amenity space that was proposed in the DEIS plan has been modified to storage space in the FEIS plan. It should be pointed out that the FEIS has been expanded based upon expands upon information that was provided in the DEIS within this additional investigations based on the comments that were received on the DEIS. And this includes, and you may recall the things that were out there that they were required to do. They completed the geotechnical study that analyzes the pile installation and de-watering for the new building foundation. They completed a parking study over the past Memorial Day weekend. And they provided some preliminary results of recent remedial testing on the site. However, our initial review reveals that the submitted FEIS does not address certain key issues that were identified during the public review of the DEIS. And these issues constitute topics for which we believe revisions to the FEIS will be necessary, including the following. And again, we, this is just preliminary to give you an idea of where what we found so far. We'll put this all in writing in a draft memo for the board's consideration. As I noted a little while ago, the FEIS discusses recent remedial investigation work, that's site testing, doing borings, testing the groundwater and the soil at at the the subject property, the project site. And this investigation discovered previously unknown contamination. And the implications of these findings are unclear from the information provided in the FEIS. Open issues include what the what extent of additional site investigation will be needed to fully characterize the extent of contamination? And what magnitude of remediation may be necessary to address the contamination? On the latter point regarding remediation, it's just pointing out, it specifically says in the FEIS that there's a possibility the developer could have difficulty obtaining project financing if the cleanup costs are too high compared to the benefits offered under the Brownfield Cleanup Program, which they're doing remediation under. And on this basis, a clearer picture of remedial requirements for the project is needed to satisfy seeker's hard look standard and to support fully informed decision making. So on this key issue, it's kind of in a state of flux. But it is certainly one of the important issues that keeps coming up about this project. What remediation is required and what implications that has for the proposed development. In relocating the ADA parking spaces from the existing gravel lot at Five Bridge Street to the development site at seven and eleven Bridge Street, the overall area of project related disturbance is now about three hundred square feet below the regulatory threshold for the mandatory preparation of a stormwater pollution prevention plan, or what's known as a SWIP. The FEIS asserts that this obviates the need for the SWIP because it's below the regulatory threshold. However, the applicant's original draft scope, the draft outline for the FEIS that was submitted more than a year ago, and the DEIS itself specified that a SWIP would be included in the DEIS. And this was carried out to the final scope that was adopted by the planning board. Furthermore, the accepted DEIS repeatedly identifies the preparation and implementation of the SWIP as mitigation for potential project related stormwater impacts. And based on this, we believe that the inclusion of a preliminary SWIP, a draft version of the full report analyzing stormwater, potential stormwater impacts and mitigation measures, as was requested in the commentary on the DEIS, is necessary to determine whether these impacts can be adequately mitigated. The third item we've encountered in our preliminary review, there seems to be a significant discrepancy regarding the existing lot at Five Bridge Street between the information and the parking study the applicant performed over the Memorial Day weekend and which was included in the FEIS versus the proposal for the use of this lot to accommodate project related parking demand. The parking study indicates that this lot has a capacity of eighty vehicles, which incidentally was fully occupied at the peak period over Memorial Day weekend. Whereas the application specifies that this lot, without any modifications such as pavement markings to delineate individual stalls, would accommodate ninety five vehicles. So fifteen more vehicles than were observed out in the field is what they're claiming the parking lot will accommodate for the project. Absent a satisfactory demonstration by the applicant that this lot would actually accommodate fifteen more spaces than is evident than its evident capacity in a recent investigation. It appears that the additional, an additional variance would be required that has not been previously identified. The fourth item, the FEIS does not provide the additional information that was requested regarding the market analysis included in the DEIS to substantiate the need for the commercial component of the proposed development. Based, the FEIS states in part, in the absence of the need for a market study for the proposed land uses, the questions pertaining to select portions of the market study should not be considered relevant. However, the need for the market study was specified in the final scope. So therefore, technical questions seeking elaboration or clarification to better substantiate the conclusions of the market study are appropriate and should fully be addressed, should be fully addressed in the FEIS. Fifth, the FEIS does not address the exceptional hardship standard that applies to the requested relief from the floodplain development requirement. that applies to the requested relief from the floodplain development requirements. Sixth, the um FEIS proposal for wet floodproofing of the facilities below the base flood elevation, including occupied commercial space in the residential lobby, does not appear to be permissible under the applicable applicable regulations. The D E I S uh proposed dry floodproofing for uh these areas that are below the uh base flood elevation, uh which is allowed under the regulation for the uh commercial space. It's not permitted for the residential space. The changes to the residential unit mix in the FEI- this is the seventh item. Uh the changes to the residential unit mix in the FEIS were accompanied by revisions to the second and third story floor plans, where the residential units located. The first floor has the commercial space in the lobby for the residential use. In particular, whereas the D E I S plan included an internal amenity courtyard on the second floor that would comprise a common space acceptable uh accessible to all residents via doors from the hallways. So you may recall that it was a uh like an O-shaped uh footprint, and they had a uh uh the this amenity space through the middle and doors at either end that you can get into it from the courtyard. Uh the FEIS proposal calls for four isolated courtyards that are not shown as having any accents access and whose function is not clear. They're just blank rectangular spaces in the middle of the building. The design intent and practicality of this layout should be explained. Eighth, the applicant's recent application to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which was included in the FEIS appendices, does not include two of the variances that were identified in the D E I S. Uh these are uh a uh the D I S indicated that a variance was needed to allow for the parcel at Five Bridge Street to be retained in its current condition rather than being upgraded as uh parking lots typically are when you uh go through site plan review, uh including things like uh um pavement finishing markings, curving drainage, pedestrian accommodations, and landscaping and lighting. And then the second uh variance that was noted in the D E I S but was not included in the Z B A application is uh an allow uh a permission to allow commercial space below the base flood elevation. The Z B A the Z B A application did um include a request for relief uh for the uh residential space, but it didn't mention the commercial space. If these two variances are no longer believed to be necessary, an explanation should be provided in the FEIS. Otherwise, it appears that the Z B A application was not uh incomplete. Ninth, based on discussions with the village, it's and uh it's Nelson Puffin Bohe's understanding that the applicant may be contemplating seeking a separate approval for the use of the parcel at Five Bridge Street as a uh private parking lot. Any such application would be uh should be introduced and analyzed in the FEIS as part of the overall proposed action. Tenth, the FEIS indicates that the Village Building Department has determined that the four alternative development scenarios presented in the D E I S, uh which included uh grade-level entrance for uses on two stories above, would not be code compliant. They uh would comprise buildings uh that three stories in height where only two stories are permitted in the office district. On this basis, the FEIS presents a revised analysis for the two alternatives consisting of as a right uses, which eliminated the third story so that a variance would not be required for those two alternatives. However, there are other two alternatives uh which were uh a similar layout were retained, um and it uh appears that uh that's just based on the fact that they needed uh special per- they have special permit uses. But the um the final scope was very clear that all of the alternatives must be zoning compliant. Uh so they would have to modify those two alternatives as well for the FEIS uh with uh uh code compliant uh layouts. And then finally, the FEIS does not still does not provide meaningful information regarding the cultural resource value of the residence at uh Seven Bridge Street. Therefore, the magnitude of the impact that will result from the proposed demolition of the structure remains unclear. As indicated uh at the outset, these are some of the key findings of our preliminary review of the FEIS that was submitted by the applicant. Our review is ongoing, and it's anticipated that additional issues will be identified in our draft memo to the board. And uh certainly, if anybody has any comments uh or questions, I'll I'll be happy to uh entertain them or try to answer them.
That's a lot. Thank you, John. Um to to back back up for a second, did you say that you might you might be able to? You might have uh finished your review of this that this for us by the September meeting, possibly? Is that what you said?
That is that's uh we think we can, but um uh we'll see as we get into it. Um but these are the main issues, and it appears that these will entail a lot of work. Um so uh uh I I don't think there will be any other major issues. But again, since the FEIS has to speak with the 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 board's voice, um we have to go through with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that there's no uh unsupported conclusions or language that the uh board night might not be comfortable with having in their document. So we'll have a lot of uh less substantive comments but are important because of the fact that the FEIS will be the board's document. And it's as if you wrote it. But uh as is typical, you're asking the um applicant to do uh the first shot and now maybe the second shot uh because they have the information. They're doing the studies. So it just makes more sense for them to uh um prepare the initial document.
It sounds like the revisions or the the communication is ongoing. You mentioned that the the applicant's engineer perhaps maybe is listening this evening. So this is this is an ongoing fluid process, it sounds like.
Correct, and um some of the issues uh particularly with regard to the remediation are um uh in a state of flux because they have completed uh the uh test. They have completed testing of the site. And based on the initial information that uh I'm aware of, uh the D E C it appears the D E C is gonna require additional testing. And uh the next step after the testing is done is for the applicant to prepare a report to the D E C with the full testing results.
Asking for what, John? Can you explain that to the board?
Excuse me?
That was Liz asking, testing for what?
Oh, okay, testing the um testing the soil, the groundwater and the vapor soil vapor on the site. So they go out there with equipment and and drill holes uh take.
Why would they need to do additional testing?
Why would they need to do additional test? Okay, uh cuz the um based on the uh the uh results of this testing, uh they may have to go in between where the um uh the test points are to see if there's more contamination in that area or if there's no contamination. Um so I think it's a matter of uh mostly of determining the full spatial extent of the contamination, and maybe they have to go deeper as as.
My understanding, I don't want to speak for you or the testing because I'm not a scientist, but my understanding was that they found um additional contamination that they didn't anticipate finding and therefore had to refer that to the D E C through a spill report. Is that correct?
That is right. That's correct.
They found additional coal tar on site that has to be further tested to decide if it's gonna have to be remediated, further remediated through the site plan, through this SMP, or to decide how the D E C is gonna require them to handle that.
Well, the I my understanding is they they found this additional contamination on the site. They they were hoping based in in it wasn't the uh um blind hope. They were hoping that they'd go out there and they wouldn't find any contamination because there's been a lot of testing that's gone on over the years. Um but they did encounter this uh this contamination that was not previously known about. Um and uh the uh uh at that point, the 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 D E C may have gotten the results. This is there could be multiple ways this could go. And uh but it's seems to be going in one direction. The uh applicant may have done the testing and submitted the results to the D E C. And even though there was additional contamination, the testing results may have fully characterized the extent of the contamination. And the D E C uh would say, all right, you have enough uh you dug dug enough holes on the site. We know exactly where all the contamination is. Now submit a plan on how you're gonna clean it up. My understanding is that didn't happen, that the testing uh was not a hundred percent conclusive about what may have to be remediated. So they're gonna have to do a testing to determine uh if there is additional contamination that has to be addressed.
Um what does that do to the FEIS if there's additional testing was still pending? Does that just put it on hold?
I think it depends on receiving. Is sufficient enough to require something supplemental, which is.
Yeah, yeah, but like I don't know if you could hear Liz. She was she was um answering, I guess, uh the query from from Granja about what does it do to the FEIS and and when does it trigger something else like a supplemental?
Certainly, that would the board uh it's in the board's authority if they believe that uh the circumstances warranted based on the guidance in the regulation, uh a a supplemental is one route to go. But e- even if we continue with the FEIS, um the FEIS is not complete uh for all the other reasons I mentioned. But they could probably uh they may be able to address all those other issues because they're static issues that can be um addressed by answering the questions. This one is in a state of flux, and we don't really have a good handle on what's the magnitude of the the problem that has to be addressed.
So you still testing? Great.
Okay, that's actually helpful to know that the the you you've you've identified multiple places so far, uh multiple issues, I should say, that need um further information or further further elaboration um from the applicant. But you're also pointing out that one of these, they are still waiting for more information. They're gathering information. So that's a good distinction to know about. Okay, okay, good.
And uh for the remediation issue, um the uh ultimate decision is obviously gonna be in the hands of the D E C as to what testing is needed and what remediation is needed.
Do they have a timeframe as to when they're going to report back? Like there are timeframes with these spill reports and tests and and things like that. What do you know what they are?
Uh they um uh I do not know off the top of my head, but this is in a it's kind of an interim submission that they made to the D E C. Uh they just submitted the um the test results instead of the full. There's a there's a whole report that's supposed to be wrapped around it um when they're done with the testing. So they.
Do you know what that report is called?
Uh the uh Remedial Investigation Report, I think it's called.
Okay, maybe we can find out the the timeframes for that.
Well, it's um there are specific timeframes, but they're not at the point where they can submit the report because they know they have to go out and do more testing.
Okay.
John, are there any timeframes regarding the FEIS that we should be aware of at the planning board level? Are are we constrained or are we working um toward? Do we have? Do we have a a date that we need to have something done by or are we are we clear of that?
The uh we're pretty much clear of it um as opposed to the D E I S where there are specific uh timeframes for the review of a D E I S received from an applicant. There are timeframes for the preparation of an FEIS, but the SEAKER regulations has have a uh a pro- a separate provision for the FEIS that says that essentially, I don't want to say you can take as long as you you want to, but if the uh lead agency needs more time to complete the FEIS, they can. They should keep the applicant informed. Um and certainly in this case where the ball is in uh well, well, the applicant submitted a an FEIS, so the ball's technically in our court. But we are informing the applicant that the ball's gonna be back in their court. Um so it's different than the D E I S where we get the document, we review it, and we send comments back, and it's pretty clean cut. Here, we're going back and forth. So we're a timeframe-wise under Seeker, we're okay. That's we're uh uh expeditiously reviewing what the applicant submitted, and we're letting them know what the status is.
Good, good. Um are you have questions and comments?
Who's um who's deciding if the Z B A application is complete? Like with the you mentioned, there's two possible variances that are not listed on the application.
Um well, we're gonna we're gonna throw it back to the applicant because they uh um they it's up to them to submit a complete application to the Z B A. And uh if they say uh if they can demonstrate in the FEIS that those variances, the F the D E I S mistakenly identified those variances, then I guess they're okay. Uh but uh I'm not sure uh that that's the case because I haven't I haven't heard anything to suggest that uh they revisited those two variances and uh um they have demonstrated that they don't need them.
That's, you know, that's they're gonna be dealt with at the Z B A.
Yeah.
But it's for, but it's something.
And then there's the additional issue about whether they, in addition, uh besides using the offsite parking uh for for their project-related parking requirement, uh there's a question about whether they're really meeting the parking uh requirement for uh the the full development. Uh because the the parking lot at uh um Five Bridge does not appear to have the number of parking spaces that they're claiming it has.
I have a question for you, John. Does the the study that was done and sent to the D E C, does that affect the potential use of these sites? Or are we not at that point yet? Because there used to be restriction on the use of the site because of its proximity to the contamination site.
Right, uh so what has happened is in the FEIS, they included as an appendix uh the amendment that was issued by the D E C for the environmental easement, which allows the the uses that they're proposing. There which known as restricted residential, which is multifamily residential. But it's contingent upon them uh going through uh complying with the uh the site management plan uh that's been established. And that includes the requirement for the additional testing that they just did and any remediation that's necessary. So yes, the D E C said it's okay to um uh develop the site with um residential uses, but they gotta go through this process and get to the finish line on the remediation. So they can they can't go out there and start building how uh condominiums as the site sits right now.
Right, right. Thanks. Um I see that Tiffany Scarlato, the attorney for the applicant, is here here in the audience. Do you wish to have anything to say?
I don't have any comments right now. The board has any specific questions that I can answer.
Fine, fine.
I think John has explained everything as to where we are.
Very good. Okay, good. Um, all right. If that's where we are, we're good to go. Um Liz, are you are you satisfied with?
I just wanted the board to be updated on what's going on. Where we stand with FEIS and John's review.
Right, and it sounds like everything happens concurrently. And if we don't have answers on pieces, they get amended at later dates. That's it's dealing with information as we get it.
Yeah, yeah. I I have I have a question. This is probably for Liz and possibly for for Doris. Um uh the FEIS is in our hands. Is and I've.
It should be on the website.
Is it on the website?
Yes, yeah.
And do we?
It's a draft FEIS.
That's my good magnet max question. Do we call it a D F E I S or just a draft F E I S? Okay, all right. So it's distinguished from a D E I S.
This is what we call a draft FEIS.
FEIS, and it's on the website.
Right, and is there a um with the FEIS, is there another public review?
No.
Timeline? No, okay. It's not the same as the D E I S. Okay.
Okay, okay. Um. Thank you, John Ellsworth. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That was very well done and comprehensive as always with you. So thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um. We're basically at the end of the meeting, but before I do, I was a remiss. I wanted to um welcome you, Rich Warren, to back to the table. Um uh Rich Warren with Interscience, he's he will be our consultant going forward or maybe others, his firm will be our consultant. I'm not sure if it's gonna be you or other people.
Uh Mike Chiano, my staff, and Cassidy Walls, my staff, are busy trying to catch up on all the applications between them.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Um wel- welcome back. Welcome back. Um I worked with Rich years ago and um in this in this room, and it's nice to be back with you. Thanks for being here. Um, okay, I think that's. Okay, I think that's it for tonight. I'll take, I'll take a motion to adjourn if we're ready. Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Eddie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you. And good luck, Larry.
Thank you.
Very.
Thank you very much.
It won't be completely gone.
You'll be coming back for visits, right?
I have obligations to the business.